The property tax manager in Morrison County for getting back to me, I didn't go further into that. Since he said the taxes will need to be paid, but I can definitely look into that. If we want to see if there is a way, but I would imagine he would have told me, being a city that. He would have told me.
This is last year's taxes or this year's?
It's this year's, we just missed the cutoff to change it from the classification.
Yep.
Because of when we bought it.
Which some of that'll come back to the city and you know, really, really is listing because our taxes are on there too. I don't, I honestly, if you had in your opinion, do you, I don't know if there's a way to fight that.
I doubt it. I would imagine he would have told me something about, I'm sure this has happened before, but. I guess I can, I can double check tomorrow and see, just contact. Property tax manager again and see if there's what, he did, he CC'd the Otterberry treasure and the assessor and. So I'm guessing that's kind of. The final decision there. But I can definitely, I'll definitely either way let him know tomorrow. I don't know that being a motion to pay this or anything, but.
No, but either way it has to be paid. Does anybody else have, or Steve, does that answer your question or?
Um, no, is he missed, is there just a misunderstanding? Well, first of all, is the money that we're being charged just because he missed the filing date? Is that all that's involved?
Yeah, I believe it's just the time that we bought the property, it's just bad timing. And what I've been getting out of it, we missed the cutoff date for a change to classification, which was July 1st of last year.
Yeah, because I think we purchased it after July 1st, I think, yeah, July 1st is the cutoff date.
I don't know, if it takes like five, 10 minutes to ask on the phone, I personally didn't like, like the voice thing like that, especially when it was on. You know, missing the time, because it was kind of a complicated setup. Well, I guess it wasn't, but I don't know, just five minutes, I'll at least try.
Yeah, I got, I noted it, I can do that tomorrow, just give them a call and see what they say.
But I mean, if he, if they say no, there's nothing they can do, which your, his letter indicates, that would even try to get him tomorrow, but um. I mean, does anybody have any objection to paying it if we have to, I guess?
Um, probably just taking from myself, I have no objection at all. I just thought it was. An honest mistake for a good day, but other than that, no, I got no problem paying it.
The property thing probably should have been brought up when we purchased it. At that time, you know, whoever should have checked that out maybe, but I mean, I know we did a lot of it on our own just to get it done. So we probably, probably something that we missed.
This problem, I wouldn't have any objection to paying it anyway.
Well, he'll, he'll try tomorrow, you know, call down there again and just make double check on stuff and then, like I said, at some point. Probably have to pay it by May, at least by May 15th.
Yeah, I, I'll hold the jet, the check tomorrow from the, from the batch there and see what I can find out if there's any way to fight this. If not, I'll send the check if that's okay with everybody.
It's okay with me, I guess. Alright, well, nobody has anything add more to that, then we'll, we'll keep, keep moving here.
Okay, so we had, you'll maybe remember from last fall, um. Oh, I'm sticking on, so the, I have two memberships that are up. Um, that Lacy had had, she did not have the MN GFOA membership last year. That one was seventy, that one's seventy dollars and the MCFOA, that's a renewal membership, that one's forty-five dollars. So a total of a hundred and fifteen dollars for those two memberships. And what those two organizations do is gives a lot of training resources from my position for clerks. So first one's Minnesota Clerks Financial Officers Association and Minnesota Government Financial Officers Association. Those are those two there. So like I said, the total comes to a hundred and fifteen dollars, we have budgeted a hundred and thirty. And those were the two memberships that were in that budget. So I just figured I'd bring that to your attention since it's switching over from Lacy to me.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with you doing those. Anybody have any objection of him getting those two memberships?
No, no, I don't have to.
Alright.
I don't think, I think needs a hundred and fifty block, I don't know, we need to make a motion, you just do it. If nobody has an objection, doesn't verbally say objection to it, I think you just do it. We've been doing them, but last year we didn't do one. Alright.
Up next, um, we have budget process will be coming up and we're just wondering if we can schedule a workshop. Last year we had one the end of May, but I think that was more to do with um, Lacy's leave. Because then they ended up having another one in early June. Looks like June 13th, so it would have been the Thursday after the June meeting, we had a budget work session last year. But in the years past, it's been pushed out even to August, but I just want to get that in everybody's. Mind, I guess. We can schedule it now or if you want to wait till the June meeting and schedule it. Depends on how early you think we need to do that.
Are you, uh, are you kind of comfortable with the budget being now? Or you kind of wish that this?
For the most part, I'll definitely brush up a lot between now and the work session that we get scheduled.
I think we wait till June, when you guys, especially with this Corona thing, you know, still being home. Just wait till June meeting and then see where we're at.
Yeah, I would say wait till June because with that budget, uh, work session, we sort of need to all be in the room together.
Correct. And there's, like I said, there's no rush, I mean, we could even do it in July if we need to, so. Alright, we'll just, we'll put that on the agenda for June meeting.
That sounds good. So that's all I have for the administrative department there.
Does anybody else have any other thing for Kirk?
Oh.
No? Alright. Um. So old business.
And this is something that, so we motioned in. At the last meeting to waive penalties and disconnects for March, April and May. And then part of that was to just revisit it this month to see if any changes need to be made to that, so. So what we're already, we already motioned penalties be, and disconnects just be stopped through May. And I just put that back on the agenda to revisit that, if we're going to extend that or make any changes there this meeting.
How, how has it been looking on May? People keeping up?
Yeah, it seems to be, yeah.
Okay. From your opinion, do we need to add more to it or just leave it as it is right now?
I would think it'd be alright right now to leave it as is and we can, I could leave it on there for June too, because. Because we are, we're already covered through May, so if at the June meeting we decide to extend it, we can do that at that time.
Sounds good to me. Are you guys okay with that? Or they just moving that to the June meeting to discuss it again?
I don't agree with that.
Citywide Godstale, we postponed and we're looking for a date. Anybody have any suggestions on dates? I think we should go further to the end of June if we're gonna.
Yeah, and this can, this can probably be another one that we move to the June agenda too and just see where we're at in June. Depending on what your thoughts are.
We don't, we advertise one of those?
I think we did. I'll be on June.
How long do those take to make?
A couple of days.
Oh, that makes sense. Right. I'm just thinking, June meeting, it'll be the fourteenth, is that where I look at it, right? Or for, oops, I'm wrong. Eight, okay, so that won't be so bad. So we could still do it end of June if we wanted to.
Even to July, hopefully, myself.
Alright. Now July 4th wouldn't be the worst, we can be the worst at Citywide Godstale. Are you, are you guys okay with just wait until June to discuss another date?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, so that's another June meeting conversation. Does anybody have anything else to add on to that? Alright. So new business, we have um, liquor renewal license, we have the Motley Discount Liquor Store. We have Why Not Liquor Store pending application packet, Bremers. Including Sunday, Ten High, including Sunday, and Orton's Holiday, which don't look like they're going to renew their license, so.
Yeah, so I changed that, that was right before I got the agenda out, but I found out they're opting out of the three-two licenses here, so. So we'll get through that. And then all the other Motley Discount Liquor, Bremers Bar and Ten High all have their packets in. And they're good to go, I had Jason look at their release to hand for the police department for the background. And then we're just waiting on Why Not's packet, I have not received their application packet yet, but I believe we can still approve pending that.
I know every year we have a little trouble. A little late coming in, so. Alright, so I need a motion to approve the liquor license of Motley Discount Liquor, Why Not. Why Not Liquor pending application packet, uh, Bremers Bar, Ten High Bar.
I'll raise the motion.
Okay, first motion made by O'Regan, looking for a second, second one.
Oh, okay.
Second by Carlson. We'll roll call.
Councilmember Hudson.
Councilmember Hudson's in. Looking for a roll call now.
Hi, sorry.
Yeah, no problem, just doing a roll call vote on the approving the liquor licenses.
She said aye.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Regan.
Aye.
All, uh, all ayes and no nays, so we will approve that, approve that motion. Okay, so the next one is Kramer, certificate, uh, special assessment complaint, I'll let Kirk explain this.
Ron Kramer had come to my office a couple of weeks ago, was not happy about his 2020 property tax statement. As it had our Emory Circle street assessment on it, which included interest. Um, he said he did not receive the letter, and I had included the letters in the packet, so page 25 is the letter I sent him. And as follow-up to the page 26, which is the letter Lacy had sent him November 15th of 2019. And he said he did not receive Lacy's number, or letter. So he was wondering if there's any way you can pay the whole amount without interest or not. And his interest amount, I believe I included, no, I didn't include, it was three hundred and something dollars. But I included it.
So basically he goes, they go winter, they go to the winter, Arizona for the winter. And I know his brother was ill and they were traveling back and forth for the funeral, I'm not exactly sure when this letter, it was November 15th. So they should, they should have gotten it, but he's claiming they didn't get it. Otherwise, he would have, he said they would have paid for it and wouldn't have had no interest, so I guess. Want to, once again, I'm not going to be involved in making this decision, you guys. I'm going to stay, stay out of it just because of conflict, and so I'll let you guys decide what you want to do. Either approve him, if you, uh, my thing would be if, if you guys decide that you do want him to pay the, or. Take the interest out and have him pay the whole thing, I would have a cutoff date, I'd have a date where it has to be paid by such and such a date.
Can I move a little bit of that?
See, okay, go ahead, somebody, go ahead.
Um, Pat asked how much interest the dollar amount was.
No, he said a little over three hundred dollars.
Yeah, yes.
What was it?
I can grab it, yours will take me like.
And then I was going to say we had, um. I'll say problems with this situation before. Um, it just seems quite a coincidence he didn't receive it again. It just, uh, I don't know.
When's the tax due date? Is it 15th, May 15th?
It is, yeah, the taxes do the 15th, but what I told him is regardless, regardless of what we decide tonight. The council decides tonight, they'll pay that to Morrison County the same. It would just be up to us whether we count the money coming back to us a hundred percent towards principal or. Or keep that, keep him liable for that interest on that, so. So basically his pay, I, I did instruct him that his payment to Morrison County be the same no matter what, so. He's not waiting for this decision to, um, to pay his property tax statement.
But I think when I talk to him, and he is going to pay the, my opinion, already told me is that we. Either, either way, but he wants to pay that assessment off.
Yeah.
So he's going to do that relatively quick, but I would definitely suggest that if the council in whole decides to. Take the interest off because he didn't get the letter, and then it should be a date that by such and such a date had to be paid for, otherwise. Because at some point, you know. But that's, that's up to you guys, you guys make the decision, the decision however you want to handle that. But he's claiming he had, did not get it, and if he would have, he would have paid it.
Well, I wouldn't see it more as taking the interest off, but if it's not paid for, probably in a. A couple of months or a month, then he put that interest back on it and it won't be at every standup.
So, yeah, I don't know how that, how do we do that for the, like, if another one comes and says that you.
We'd almost have to do it the same, we only had, I want to say we only had one that we sent. Well, one more in that circle anyway.
I guess I would short, my opinion is I would shorten it up, I'd shorten it, I wouldn't give two months, but I would shorten it up. Real quickly short, if he has the money to pay for it, pay for it, yeah.
Right, yeah, I was thinking it was like ten days or something, something on that.
Right. Well, it's not.
One more thing about it's, uh, you know, people only have to say that they didn't get it, you know, that. That makes it easier, I guess.
Right, and I feel like you do, Steve, but I also then it's like, okay, what happened, he did honestly not get it, then what? You know?
No, I agree.
So it's kind of frustrating. But if one of you, uh, one of you guys want to make a motion, I'm going to abstain and we'll, um. Do a roll call after that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to waive the, uh. Captain, I think that, um, for. Day two.
Okay, ten days?
And, okay, yeah, that works.
Okay, from today's date?
Yep. And if it's not paid for by then, then we put the back back on and say, yeah, it's a regular can.
I'm just waiting on Kirk to make sure he got, does that all make sense to you?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Then I'll just make sure I get him a letter out in the mail tomorrow morning that we. Unless we want to save from the date of the letter. But regardless, I could probably just give it out tomorrow.
No. You know, Kirk, I don't know that I would do a letter, I, I mean, I'd definitely do a letter, but I would give him a phone call.
Call him, yeah.
And maybe even do a certified letter.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, it's a little expensive, but at least then we have a basis covered and we can't have this situation again.
Right. Okay, I have a motion, um, on the floor to give ten days from today's date. Um, I'm looking for a second. No second? Well, then the motion, motion, motion dies. Does anybody else have a motion they want to bring forward regarding this?
Amy, does it?
Okay, what's your motion, Amy?
I, I called and I hung up on you right then, the call didn't get.
Oh, okay, well, let's, we're going to revisit this then. So Carlson made a motion.
Yeah, sorry.
Carlson made, did the rest of you guys, are you guys still there?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay, um, Carlson made a motion, ten days from tonight, uh, that he pay the whole thing within ten days from the night, then we, the interest stops. Or we'll take the interest off, if he, if he doesn't, the interest gets added back on and the interest continues. Uh, then Amy, or, uh, then it was added that he, we send us, he make a phone call to him tomorrow and then send a certified letter to him. Stating the same thing. So we had one motion, I was looking for a second.
You know, I was second that, um, I was just meaning put in a time deadline.
Like ten?
So when it needs to be received.
Right, I think that's what we meant by the ten days, is that correct, Chase? Ten, ten days from tonight.
Okay, okay, yeah, I was second to the motion.
Okay, we have a second by Amy.
I, I guess I have a question, do we have the exact amount of interest we're talking?
I'll go grab it.
He'll go grab it.
Uh, the, the interest amount was three hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and I apologize for not having that.
Three?
In advance.
You could say one thirty-eight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
I don't want to be the victim of the voodoo doll all day long.
Councilmember O'Regan.
Aye.
Alright, we have all ayes except the voodoo doll. So the motion is carried. Alright, um, who else we got here? June Fest is canceled, we have towns.
Yeah, I just included that in there, and also Motley Fair, I got confirmation this morning that Motley Fair is canceled, which probably to be expected. Next year's Motley Fair is June 8th, 18th through the 20th of 2021.
Is that later than normally is? No? Alright, so I'm going to add one thing on here, and I guess I should have had it added, is Bruce's, um. Performance evaluation is up. Did you guys all get a packet to fill out?
Yep, I did, I did, I tried it in to Kirk.
Okay, so I kind of picked Bruce's brain and I also talked to Carlson about it, because he's his liaison. Of how we can do this without us all like meeting. And what we kind of came up with, and you guys can tell me if you, you like it or you don't like it, but we kind of come up with being the outs. You know, the, the previous outstanding job Bruce has done in the long history of, of, um, the employment with the city. That if everybody wrote what, if they had any concerns on those sheets. And then maybe I and Chase Carlson meet with Bruce and just kind of let Bruce read them and sign them and get them in his file. Um, that that might be sufficient being the time we're at. Uh, are you guys, would you guys be okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Amy, how do you feel?
No, I find that Bruce is a, is a hard one to, to use or use on because you never have any suggestions, like. I, you know, I have nothing bad to say of Bruce whatsoever, so.
Right.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, just so you guys, if you guys can write clear and put your concerns on there, or concerns are good, better good, uh, on there. Then we'll go over them with him and get him signed and get him in his, in his thing. Uh, that way that alleviates us all getting together and having to have a closed meeting and. Well, it'll be just me and Chase and Bruce to get through it, so hopefully the next one we are able to all meet again. Uh, Steve, are you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely, uh, if I understand correctly, we, we still fill out the one that we got in our packet today, right?
Correct.
And not, and not go past here.
No, yeah, fill out the ones that he gave us in our mailboxes, fill those out, and if you can kind of detail it, maybe write clear so we can all read it. Me and Chase can read it when we bring them up here, and we're just going to let Bruce read them. And if he, there's no issues or concerns, we're just going to let him sign them, I sign them, and we'll put it in his, put it in his file.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so as soon as you guys get those sent, spring them up to Kirk, you'll put them on a pile, when he gets them all, you will let it, let us know and we'll get together. Me and Chase will get together and get it done. Alright, well then we'll move on, um, public forum, is there anybody from the public in here? Karen, I know you're in there still. Oh, maybe she's not.
I am here, I just had an office.
Oh, I'm glad I didn't say something bad then, just kidding, Karen.
Well, I have a picture on here with James here and he was proud of it.
Well.
Well, I, I have it now.
Husbands can do that once in a while. Alright, um, so any members from the public have anything to say? It sounds like we have nobody on there, so then we'll go to the council. Does the council have anything they want to say? Recognition for any words?
Yeah, I'll say, uh, with my public speeches, I may be leaving you with a certain like.
Okay, well, if it, that's fine, as long as I have three of you for the adjourn motion, we're good. Alright, upcoming meeting, city, citywide meeting cleanup is still going to be May 16th, by the way. And anybody that is jeopardized, I mean, if you guys, I know Steve, you have some medical issues and stuff, and whoever else does, I mean. You get, you're free to come up and sit, watch if you want or whatever, just use precautious, I just want everybody safe. We're going to continue having it, just the fact that I think it's kind of important to get, to get stuff cleaned up, and people are waiting for that, so. We're still going to have it May 16th at seven forty-five to ten, ten forty-five AM. And, uh, the city hall is going to be closed Memorial Day, 25th, planning and zoning is going to be canceled. Right, May, are we, are we having it in May?
They haven't decided yet.
Okay, so far it's May 26th, so stay tuned for if it gets canceled. Uh, the next regular council meeting is June 8th, um, at six thirty here at the council chambers, I'm looking for a adjourn, a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I just want to say, uh, the new sign for our Stone's Barbecue looks nice. And I also wanted to say, Tammy, London, just knew that, uh, the decorations outside. Makes her store look very good in, for our town, so thank you for both of you.
Yeah, those are, those are nice. Jason, you have a letter? Where's your, yeah, what is that? Do you want?
I can send that out.
So I, I have a letter here that, um, a couple of the dispatchers sent to Jason as the chief, um, and just. Giving Josh basically a data boy of how hard a worker he is and how much they like working with him. And, uh, so they're going to put this letter in all you guys' boxes just to read, it's a nice letter. And I just want to congratulate him, and you're going to get, give it to him, tell him that the council. Really appreciates the work he does too, and you, by the way, I know you, you all do, all your city employees are hard workers. You make us look good and I like that, make the city look good, so.
And Al, I have one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I agree with everything you said with Jason and Josh and Bruce and, and the fire chief.
Yeah.
But, um, is Lacy officially done now?
Close.
Close, she's still, she still has hours on this pay period.
And we'll have next pay period, right?
Yeah, well, this, this one was. Yeah, well, this, this one goes through, not this coming Saturday, but the following. She'll have some hours on there. Like, last pay period, she had nine hours, the pay period before that, she's had five hours.
So apparently, apparently she is working on the city...
She's cleaning up our ordinance file, electronic ordinance, because it's kind of a mess right now, so.
Apparently she's working on that, but I did express to Kirk, and I think Amy, uh, me and Amy and Kirk had a, a text message going back and forth, that by Thursday, I would like that to be at the end, and return our computer, and, you know, at some point, we gotta close it out.
Absolutely.
So that's the plan. If anybody has any questions, Thursday, this coming Thursday, hopefully she'll have at least most of it done, that Karen or, or Kirk can't continue with it, but at least have that portion done, and then we'll have her bring that computer back, and we can move forward. All right, does anybody have anything else? Then I'm, we're still looking for a motion to adjourn, unless you guys want to stay on the phone.
I'll, I will, I will.
Okay, so who made it?
Carlson.
So Chase Carlson made a motion to adjourn. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Steve Johnson seconds it. We'll do a roll call again.
Councilmember Hutchinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
And Councilmember O'Reagan?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, council, for, um, your patience and being on the phone. It went pretty well tonight, so appreciate that, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready.